Good morning. We're called to order the Wednesday, November 13th, 2019 city council meeting to order at this time. Join Linda Sellers, Councilman Sellers, has an introduction to make and then please join us in the invocation and the pledge.
Yes, I'm happy to welcome this morning Michael Gossett. He's a new teaching pastor at Green Acres Baptist Church. He moved his family to our wonderful city and we're so happy to have him. And Michael, if you'll come to the podium and offer the prayer this morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, thank you for who you are. God, we thank you, God, that you are the Lord of Lords, you are the King of Kings, and you are sovereign over all things. And Father, we thank you for such an incredible city. God, we thank you for such an incredible state that we can call home. God, we thank you, Father, that it is evident that your hand is still upon us. And I pray, Father, that you as the Creator of the heavens and the earth, and God even in this moment, as you are sustaining all things by the power of your word, Father, I am asking, Lord, that you would continue to bestow wisdom on our city. God, I pray for the leaders of our city. God, I pray for a special protection. God, I pray for a special intimacy with you. God, I pray, Jesus, that you would continue to reveal yourself to them in a very fresh and real way. And God, do all of us, Father, that we would submit ourselves unto your lordship. In the name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Michael.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the September 11th meeting.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Warren, a second by Westbrook, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now we will come down for an award.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Today is a very happy day for the city of Tyler. The Planning Excellence Recognition Program recognizes planning excellence in municipalities throughout the state. The evaluation criteria includes the level of training of planning commissioners and professional staff, professional qualifications of the planning staff, the breadth and currency of our master plan, Tyler First, and the components and completion of other planning-related projects. Speaking of professional qualifications of our planning staff, I would like to recognize Michael Howell. He passed the planning certification just last Friday.[211.01][211.01](Applause) The city's planning department has been awarded the 2019 Certificate of Achievement for Planning Excellence in recognition of the professional planning standards demonstrated by planning staff and the support exhibited by the city council as well as the planning commission. This is the fifth consecutive year that the city of Tyler Planning Department has received this award, and we couldn't do it without the support of our colleagues within the city, including all of the divisions within Development Services that help us every day, including building, permitting, permit center, engineering plan review, and GIS. And today happens to be GIS Day throughout the world, so also let's recognize our colleagues there too for a special day.[262.12][262.12](Applause) And now, it is recommended that the city council accept the Certificate of Achievement for Planning Excellence from the American Planning Association Texas Chapter in recognition
Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So, back in April of this year, council authorized an engineering contract with Kimley Horn and Associates for the year-long study of the city's traffic signal system. We have a representative, Mr. Kent Kaser, from Kimley Horn, and I'm requesting that council receive a presentation from Kimley Horn on this, just to update you on the status of this project.
Great.
Thank you, Lisa. A few months ago, or actually a few, yeah, several months ago, we gave a presentation, kind of given overall presentation over the entire project. That was very well received, and today I've got about 12 slides with words on them that actually provides an update on some of the activities that's taken place since the last time we met. There's about, oh, there's 10 total tasks as part of this overall project.
Let me interrupt. Since we have a lot of people in the room, I know there's many professionals that work with us, but you'll see all the council members looking down. What you're seeing on the screen is what we're seeing on screens here, so don't think that we're not paying attention and that we're looking down. We're just following the presentations as well. So, thank you, excuse me, for that interruption.
No problem, Mayor. But I'm pleased to say that we've completed five of the 10 tasks to date, and I'm going to touch on some of the accomplishments that we've achieved in those five. One of the first ones here is we had a great kickoff meeting, had a lot of good representation from a lot of different departments from within the city. That led into a complete workshop which developed what we call a concept of operations. This document essentially defines the vision in the future or the overall objectives and the goals of the ITS project itself. Some of the things that came out of there that were significant that I wanted to bring to your attention was the goals. There's approximately 10 of them there on the page that you see, and the first one, obviously, we wanted to be consistent within the city's core values. But there's a variety of other things that, and I won't read all of those to you, but you'll see a lot of things that are focused on technology. They're focused on tools by which the community needs and which we can manage traffic better. And it was good to have good representation, again, I show you on the left side there, of the different departments that were engaged in the development of those goals. There's a lot of stakeholders that were beyond the city. This graphic articulates what circular, but it's basically there's other communities that need to be recognized in terms of what we may touch, and that doesn't necessarily mean these other communities are driving the project, but we do recognize that they do, are out there, and perhaps we can share data, information, things of that nature. And then there's also regional partners, TechStop being one of them. They own a lot of the core arterials around the community, and so they are going to be actively involved, at least aware of what we're doing. And so we'll share the documents that we produce from them. There's other regional partners that you see listed there as well. From the concept of operations, we develop what we call needs, and you'll see, again, there's another 10 or so needs here. There's more identified in the overall study report, but you can see, and I've highlighted, the operative words of updating, expanding, deploying, and there's things out there of updating our central traffic management system software, which is what we use to control the traffic lights, installing some surveillance cameras so that we can monitor traffic flow around the community, such as South Broadway, or around the medical district, or downtown. Battery backup systems is on there, and that would be an example of one where there's currently no battery backup systems on our traffic lights, which means whenever there's a power outage, the signals go dark. It's good practice to implement battery backup systems to keep the lights on so that traffic can move safely. There's other things on there, but this good thing is that collectively we identified a lot of needs for the project, and you'll see these needs come forward when we complete the study and the recommendations of the implementation project, or implementation plan. Oops. One of the key tasks that we identified was signal optimization, and we worked with city staff to identify three primary corridors, which we focused on. One of them was Beckham, from Gentry down to Fifth. The second one's Broadway, from the Loop down to Chimney Rock. And then there was a short segment that I'm sure everybody's experienced, but that's Old Bullard to Broadway. About 18 traffic signals all total. This was implemented to be a pilot study to demonstrate what can be achieved with good practices. Signal optimization, just so that we kind of get everybody on the same page, is essentially looking at the traffic lights, appropriately calculating how much green time is needed to move the traffic demand, and then also identifying what the offset should be, which is how much travel time is required from one traffic signal to the next. If we've done everything correctly, we should be able to get traffic to progress, hopefully nonstop, but we're trying to minimize the amount of stops and reduce the amount of travel time. This particular graphic shows Beckham in the northbound travel direction. Across the x-axis, the bottom would be the time of day, and then across the y-axis is actual travel time. This shows it's approximately around a six-minute travel time to go northbound on Beckham. After we were done, we'd used probe data, which is travel time data, to identify what the after-study was. And let me back up and say, we collected the before data back in May, before school let out. We collected our traffic volume data, and then we implemented the new timings in September, right after Labor Day, after school was back in session. But you can see from the graphic that in the orange line, it was approximately a five minute. So we went from six minutes down to five minutes. You can see that the big red arrows pointing down was the amount of travel time that was reduced. And again, this is just for northbound, and we were able to achieve as much as 21 percent reduction. In the southbound direction, switching slides on you there, subtle difference there, but the impact was even greater. We got as much as 26 percent reduction. So, now if you travel those corridors, whether you recognize a minute was saved off your travel time, you know, I'm hoping that's the case, but it is significant when we go to the next slide, which is, we take all of those travel time reductions, look at it throughout the whole course of the year, and then we factor in the traffic volume that was on the roadway and the cost of time, we come up with a $15 million number. That's pretty significant for just 18 traffic signals. So I'm pleased to see that there was a big achievement on a relatively small pilot study. Let me move over to the next slide. This was done for two reasons, but this was part of our existing conditions documentation. There's roughly about 137 signals or dots on that map that represents the traffic signals. The teal-colored green signals are the signals that we're communicating with, which means between the central system and the signal device in the field, we can actually talk to it all the time. And we want to talk to it so that we can monitor it, we can download new timings, things of that nature. Roughly half of those signals are in red dots, and those means that we don't have communications to those. The impact there is if it goes into flash for some reason, we wouldn't know that until the telephone rings. So we want to take a more proactive role, and that was one of those needs that you saw in one of those previous slides, for example. This is kind of a technical slide. It's one of my last ones to talk to, but basically, as part of the data collection efforts, we identified some of the aging infrastructure that we currently have. The top two rows that you see there, the one that says TS1 and TS2, basically 50 percent of the signals is on a TS1, which is your oldest style of cabinet. To put a date to it, the TS2, which came out after that, came out in 1982. That was when the standard came out for that. So we can see that we have a lot of control cabinets out there. They're still running the signals, red, yellow, and green. That's good, but it's fairly dated equipment, and you can't even get a TS1 anymore. You have to buy newer technology. TS2 is by far not the latest technology that's available on the market today, but that's what we currently have, and that's part of the plan, is what the implementation or the migration of what the next piece of equipment should be. The middle section talks about the controller. This is kind of like your PC controller that you might have on your desktop, a PC. There's a lot of different ones that are being used around the community, and you can see some of the largest percentages, 41, 36, 32, those are the units that you see in the middle row, or the different types of PCs that are out there, controller types. This is, and I'll put it in an analogy, this is like if you had a elementary school teacher, and she's got 137 kids in her class, God forbid, but we say, hey, by the way, they speak three different languages. Good luck. And so, what I'm trying to say is, we need to get more consistency out there because, one, it's more efficient with the operators in terms of the central system itself, and also, as we bring on new signal technicians, we need to focus on one or two at best, not eight. So my point there is that there's consistency that can be achieved as we move forward in the implementation plan. Last piece on that slide there talks about detector type. That shows that we have a lot of video detection, which is completely acceptable, very common throughout any other agency around Texas. Last slide here talks a little bit about towards schedule, in terms of where we're at. The line down through the middle basically shows us that's today. We're kind of in a pause mode. We've got some staffing challenges within the city's traffic signal department, so we're kind of waiting for the new staff to come onboard, which should happen after the first of the year. And at that point, when they are onboard, we should be able to pick up where we're currently at and try to bring everything home or complete the project by the first week in May, which is the end of our 12-month project. So that was what I came to present to you today, and I'd be more than happy to take any questions that you have.
Well, go ahead. So, the pilot study, the lights that you looked at, did y'all, did you just change the time on the traffic box to give you more time for cars to go north and south? Are the lights that represented by the blue dots actually talking to one another and showing what's behind you and what's coming up?
Well, we did recalculate what we call green time, which is the amount of time needed to move the vehicles, and we also recalculated the offset, as we had spoken. So we did recalculate all of those and revisit anything that was a safety problem, which we didn't find any, but that would be the amount of yellow time that, you know, is needed to clear a signal or the pedestrian crossing times. So we did revisit all of those numbers. Does that answer your question? I'm not sure.
Kind of, but if the light one way is red, or if there's no cars, is the light going to be red to where you're not sitting there at a red light when there's no traffic coming in the other direction?
We hope not. Now, there is, one of the things that I showed you was, on that slide, was the detection. There is inherently with any system, but Tyler has its handful of what we call bad detection, which might be that you see a traffic light come on and there's no cars there. That probably is an indication of where we need detection upgrades. We turn them on just so that their phase is not missed, because that would be the worst thing to happen, is if you're showing up there and you never get a phase, and then you perhaps might pull out when it's unsafe to do so. So that's why we do what we call a "min recall," to make sure that phase comes up. But your question was, am I having a lot of times where there's red, and I can't give green to everybody all the time. Unfortunately, red does have to happen, but we do try to minimize that. And on the side streets is where you may get low traffic volumes, and we may have to allow them to wait a little bit until we can get green to come around to them. Does that make sense, or did I answer your question?
It makes sense.
Okay. And I think the other one was, you know, the one slide where I showed communication to the central system, we did make sure that we had communication to all of those traffic signals as part of the project, and we worked with the city to make sure that that was in place.
I have a question. I have noticed around the Loop, it's much better, so thank you for that. But when you mentioned the Loop to Chimney Rock, the big backup at Christmas time is from Grande out to Cumberland. Will anything be able to happen before the Christmas season on that stretch of South Broadway?
We'll be more than happy to work with the city. We did not do any timing adjustments for traffic. We don't have traffic volumes that represent that currently, but we can take and look, like I said, I'll be more than happy to work with the city.
It seems it only happens at Christmas time the rest of the year.
Well, and that's not a bad thing for ourselves, Texas, so please don't discourage.
No, we want them to come. We just want them to be able to move around faster.
Sure.
Right.
I have a question. I wanted to find out if your study for Broadway goes all the way north to the Loop, or did it stop at a certain area?
The limit was Chimney Rock to Loop 323.
Okay, so.
This was for the pilot project.
It will be everywhere.
Okay, and then, what about, it will be all over the city?
Yes, ma'am. This was just a pilot project that we're working on. The review they're doing is completely citywide.
Because I was concerned about also the traffic at Texas College, especially because of that school, the traffic is really congested, especially during early morning and then during school time.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, good. I'm just glad that you're involved in the process and that we're moving forward on it, and look forward to next May, when we get the detailed study citywide, what you think the steps will be over the next couple of years to really make great improvements.
Correct. That'd be a good plan. I'm optimistic that we'll have great recommendations.
I agree.
That'll be followed through, and with staff in place, it'll be good.
Super. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you very much for being here today. Kyle, Z1. Lisa, we'll see you later in the agenda again.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This is, this first item is a request for a PCD site plan approval to allow for a Veterans Affairs clinic. All adjacent properties are currently zoned PCD, planned commercial district. The properties to the west is the location of the village at Cumberland Park, and the properties to the north, east, and south are currently undeveloped. This request is consistent with the Future Land Use Guide, which identifies this property as mixed-use center. The request is also consistent with the Cumberland Park Development Plan originally approved in 2003. The applicant is requesting the site plan to allow for the development of a one-story VA clinic. The clinic will not provide any overnight stay for patients. This development proposal will provide medical services for veterans in the area. It also represents a major investment in Tyler's medical sector. Of the notices that were sent, none were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan in a zoning commission by a 7-0 vote recommends approval.
That's great. Any questions of Kyle? I do know that this has been a project that's been in the works for six years, seven years or so. This is a major step forward to have a VA clinic of this size in the community. I think it's great. So, if there's any other questions of Kyle, we, I do have a Ryan Davis that has submitted a card, and he said he's here for questions only. Do we have any questions?
We have a thank you.
Okay, yes, absolutely. You can turn the thank you into a motion if you like.
I'll promote you that we thank Kyle and all of those who are going to bring a large VA clinic to Tyler, Texas.
Okay, and so that's a motion to approve Z1. And we have a second from Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Great. Thank you, Kyle. That's it, right? You got one more? Oh, yeah, you do. Oh, one. I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's fine. This is an amendment to the Unified Development Code as a clarification. Currently, the UDC requires that the plan in a zoning commission hold a public hearing for each text amendment to the UDC. This has had the unintended consequence of subjecting amendments to the fees to the same formal process as a regulatory amendment, and so the UDC has a fee table with all the development fees. And so currently, the UDC requires that any change to those fees go through the plan in a zoning commission for a public hearing. Only the city council makes financial decisions for the city, including the establishment or amendment to the fees. It is recommended that the fee section in the Unified Development Code be removed from the formal planning and zoning commission process or review process. Proposed amendments to the fees would still require action from the city council and a public hearing from the city council. That being said, staff will also continue to work with the development community whenever there is any proposed changes to the fees.
Correct.
The plan in a zoning commission by a 7-0 vote recommends approval of the amendment as proposed.
Any questions for on this cleanup item?
Now, move to approve O1.
Second.
Motion by Warren, second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Kyle.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
This is a request to consider adopting ordinance number one to accept the Texas Department of Transportation Routine Airport Maintenance Program. It's called the RAMP program. Basically, what this does, it provides 50 percent funding for general maintenance of our airfield, the facilities around the terminal building, including inside the terminal building. So it kind of adds another 50 percent with a 50 percent match. It's something that we've been taking advantage of for the past, oh, several years, and it's a really, really good grant program. So this ordinance is a request, or this request for this ordinance sets out that funding for, which we have a contingency in our operating budget for that local share, and assigning those dollars to the proper accounts so we can utilize this grant if accepted.
Sure. Any other questions of Davis on this item?
Motion.
A motion to approve by McKeller, a second by McGee. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Yes, sir. Sean, go ahead.
Bringing this request before the council today. This has been a labor for the last year or so at least. Some history on this, we're asking for clarification of definitions in our city ordinance, particularly chapter 14, as pertains to animals. Currently, the state law is lacking in its clarity. It includes one sentence that says that adequate food, water, and shelter shall be provided to the extent to maintain an animal in a state of good health. That is the entire state law's definition. We want to clarify that. So this ordinance actually brings about some definitions for adequate food, adequate shelter, adequate water, necessary veterinary care, and sanitary conditions. A brief history here, there's been several pieces of legislation at the state level that have not made it out of committee over the last several legislative sessions. Basically, they've said that the local ordinances need to take up the slack. So here we are. One of the frustrations our animal control officers have is we go out to a welfare complaint, which we work about 500 a year. We'll go out there. The level of neglect may not meet the animal cruelty statute, therefore, we can't charge them with any type of state-level cruelty, but we also don't have anything at the local level by which we can effect change. So, our main goal every time we go out on a call is to affect voluntary compliance. That's the idea. Right now, we can issue a notice, suggest they do things that they're supposed to do to treat their animals correctly, and check back. That's as much power as we have. Without these definitions, we don't have anything that's a touchstone for us to actually go back and say, this has occurred, this has not occurred. It also gives us the ability to get ahead of situations that could turn into animal cruelty cases later. Specifically, we had a case earlier this year where we saw an animal in April, where it looked healthy, but some of the conditions weren't what we would consider proper animal husbandry. So... husbandry. So issued a notice, checked back. Within a month, we were out there on an animal cruelty case, the animal was being seized, Tyler Police Department was involved. These definitions would have allowed us to get ahead of something like that. The Animal Services Department tends to be a clearinghouse for assistance here in the city. To give you some idea of what we have done, we do have our pet food bank project here in the city. In the last three years, we've given out over 11,500 pounds of food back out into the community. This is, this is food that's been donated to us. It's not fed to the animals at the shelter. We're on a contract with a company to, to feed food. This is food that's been donated to the shelter that goes into our pet food bank when an animal owner comes to us and says that they, they either want to surrender the animal, or they can't feed it, perhaps they've lost a job or something like that. We can then give them some food, maybe give, you know, get them over that, that economic hardship. You know, can we give you 30, 60 days worth of food? We've been able to, to provide that. We've provided several dozen dog houses to folks that just didn't have something that could keep an animal out of the weather. That's probably been the biggest community outreach for us as far as working several of these cases. In 2017, 2018, the Animal Services Department worked over 1,000 animal welfare calls. The vast majority of these calls were handled through just education or offering assistance with the animal care. 62 of these cases required additional enforcement, but it didn't rise to the level of animal cruelty. Either we were issuing citations for no proof rabies vaccinations. We were trying to get them to low-cost vaccination clinics, spay and neuter clinics, so that we're ending the cycle of more animals being born into these conditions. Only 18 of these cases were eventually elevated to either animal cruelty or to a seizure-type of situation. Quite often, what we're finding is if an animal is abandoned at a house, owners left or was evicted but failed to take the animal with them, currently, we can put a notice up there and we have to return in 24 hours to check back. We're actually seizing that animal under an abandonment, which is under state law, versus a neglect or a welfare. If an animal is not in imminent danger, that's the terminology that's used, we can't seize it immediately. This gives us a little bit more leeway. Currently, we can either issue a notice, or we can get the police involved, which is, could elevate it to a felony. There's no middle ground. This gives our officers the discretion to be able to come in, help these citizens that have animals that they just can't take care of, find the assistance for them if necessary, or gives us some enforcement power at the local level without elevating it to a state jail felony. So, so we ask that you consider this ordinance. Mostly, the definition changes. Those are the, those are the things that were probably the largest frustration to their animal welfare individuals all over the state. Whenever I teach for the Department of State Health Services, that is the number one thing, that there is not a state definition for animal shelter. Without that, we can't effectively do our job. Thank you.
What are the new definitions?
New definitions, under chapter, they would fit under Chapter 14-1. They're a lot longer now. So, adequate food means sufficient quantity of non-contaminated and nutritionally healthy sustenance that is appropriate to the species, breed, size, age, and health of the animal that is sufficient to prevent starvation, malnutrition, or risk to the animal's health. Garbage, spoiled food, rancid, or contaminated food is not adequate food. The definition's like, like that. The adequate shelter, probably the largest one that was, that was put forward, means a protective covering for an animal that is of an adequate size and provides adequate protection to maintain the animal in a state of good health that prevents pain, suffering, or significant risk to the animal's health. Adequate shelter consists of a completely enclosed structure with at least three solid sides, a door opening on the foreside, a constructed floor and a roof. It should also be clean, dry, and compatible with current weather conditions. In addition to age, size, species, breed, and condition of the animal, the structure should be of sufficient size to allow the animal to stand, turn around, lie down, and go in and out of the structure comfortably. That's a significant.
So is there any modification to the, like, if they're on a chain?
The tethering law is a completely separate issue, especially in the state of Texas. We do have a tethering law. Currently, it says that an animal cannot be unreasonably restrained, and then it gives some certain definitions. The idea being that it has to be on a chain that's at least five times its body length. If, that is, that is still covered under state law. It's poorly written. It was poorly written in 2007. A lot of us in the animal welfare industry back then made that known at the state level, only because the definitions are in a different place in that law. Most, most laws are written with the definitions first and then the act second. That one is reversed, and so it doesn't, it doesn't get the perusal that it should whenever someone's reading it. So, it is still lawful to keep an animal tied as long as it is not on a pinch or a choke-type collar and that the, the length of the tether is either 10 feet or five times the body length of the animal, whichever is greater.
In coming up with this, did you have input from interested parties in the city?
Yes, this, this went before our Shelter Advisory Board several times, as a matter of fact, and they actually voted to send this for approval to council. We had quite a bit of input. The, the definitions themselves were, the first place that I went was the National Animal Cruelty Investigation School. It's kind of the authority in the United States for, for this type of thing. These are the definitions that have stood up in multiple jurisdictions and court challenges throughout the United States.
You know, I like this. You know, you could, you could take a picture of me and put me in a backyard with inadequate shelter and put it on Facebook and nobody'd care. You put a dog on Facebook with inadequate shelter, it'll go viral.
Absolutely.
So, I totally support. So I move to approve O3.
Second.
I have a motion from Warren and a second from Sellers. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, David. Chief.
Either way, it's fine. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I have ordinance number four today. The request is that the city consider authorizing the city manager to execute a service agreement with Fire Recovery USA for the purpose of performing billing services in connection with motor vehicle incidents and other emergency and non-emergency incidents in which the Tyler Fire Department provides services, and approving and authorizing certain fees associated with such billing services, and also consider adopting an ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 6, to establish such fees for billing services. You have any questions?
This, this is common throughout the United States, I understand?
It is. It's been around for a number of years, but as the cost of running a fire department has gone up, many fire departments have decided to, you know, to utilize it as well with just the high cost of running a fire department to keep the taxes low.
So, when it is not reimbursed by insurance, it is not going to be billed to any individual in this public?
Absolutely. In this ordinance, it clearly states only the insurance company. We will not send a bill to the owner of the vehicle or the person who owns the insurance as well. It will only go to the insurance company.
And that's in, that's clearly in there, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In fact, Chief, you may want to walk through just some of the different things based upon kind of the, the different rates that you'll have for the different incidents, and then how then from the, the incident to then the billing of the insurance company, how that works.
Okay. We currently use this company now for our, some of our fire prevention collections, and so we've found them to be reliable in that. So this is amended contract with the same company to do the collections here. This will only affect about 11% of our calls, so the other percentage, you know, 80, 88% of our calls, or 89% of our calls will not be affected by this. Only about 11% is affected that are billable, and some insurance will pay part, or they'll pay all of whatever fees. They mainly affect car wrecks where there are chemicals on the ground, and we have to use resources to, to remediate those chemicals that are on the ground. Within the ordinance, in Part 3, it clearly says, a claim will be filed to the responsible parties through the insurance carrier, not, not to the individual. That's written right here in the ordinance. Some other agencies don't do that. They will send a, a secondary bill.
But we're not going to do that.
No, sir, absolutely not. If we don't collect from them, if it's a no from the insurance company, then it's a no, that, that's just uncollectible for us. By using this company also, we do not have to hire any additional personnel to manage it for us. So it would be a cost of another, we need another person to manage this particular part of it. But the fees cover hazard material and the other things that get on the roadway that have to be cleaned up and remediated by the fire department for the most part.
Does any of this happen with the police department? If, that it's only 11% of your calls, do they bill for cleaning up a car accident?
I'm not sure. Chief Toller would have to speak to that, but I, I don't believe so. They have other things. They have like forfeiture funds and some other funds that help to fund the police department. The fire department does not have access to any type of funds of that sort.
And most of the type of vehicle license they're going to have, if a car is towed or if there's any type of debris, typically, the, the car towing company is responsible for kind of cleaning that up. For this one, it really is, you start looking at the motor vehicle incidents that cover, as far as oil or liquids that are going to get on the ground, then the fire department's responsible for cleaning up. And just for, you know, as I was kind of looking at, if Exhibit A kind of goes into just some of those based upon our, you know, a, a car fire, for example, can cost up to about $687, just kind of how it's itemized out. And so that is then allowing for us to kind of bill for the insurance company to handle that car fire and, and the cost of what we had for the suppression of that and the foam and the materials that went on to it. It doesn't include house fires, and so that's something to wear if your house is on fire or the like. It doesn't, that doesn't come something that we will then try to bill for the insurance company. It really is incidents such as having to, kind of for heavy rescue, I see is one of them.
Hazard materials.
Where we have to create a landing zone for helicopters to be able to come in, to be able to help take care of situations, and then hazmat is one of the really big ones of, depending upon the size of the incident, that we'll be able to bill on.
So, it is recommended that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a service agreement with Fire Recovery USA for the purpose of performing billing services in connection with motor vehicle incidents and other emergency and non-emergency incidents in which the Tyler Fire Department provides services, approving and authorizing certain fees associated with such billing services, and also adopting an ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 6, to establish such fees for billing services.
Move to approve O4.
Second.
There were a motion by Westbrook, a second by McKeller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. Today, we have Lance Penley with McGriff here to present to you M1. M1 is the results of the RFP, Request for Proposals for our Stop Loss Reembarstment Insurance. Thank you.
Thanks, Rose. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Lance Penley, this is my annual meeting with you, agenda item for reinsurance. Just a little, to give you a little color, we are a self-funded medical plan, medical and pharmacy. We have stop loss that covers any losses over and above $375,000. So we carry a lot of risk on our self-funded plan, and any claim over $375,000 is then picked up by the insurance carrier. Currently, that's Voya Financial. We're going to be making a recommendation on Berkshire Hathaway. Just to give you a little additional color, the stop-loss market is very tough right now. If you've dealt with, on the property side, property insurance is seeing it's a very hard market, a lot of increases in, in that side of the house. That's really kind of reflective of what's happening on the medical side with reinsurance. So, medical trend is actually going, I've talked to you all a lot, it's at about 6% right now, but severity of claims is actually increasing. So, we're seeing more claims in the half million dollars to a million dollar range consistently. Y'all, y'all have dealt with that in the past, and then a number of my other clients are consistently seeing claims in the half million to million dollars. And then pharmacy costs, we've also talked about that, is continuing to increase. You're seeing a lot of high-cost specialty pharmacy drugs that are out there in the market, some costing, you know, 50, 100,000 dollars a month. So it's, it's a real scary time for the reinsurance markets. So with that being said, we did an RFP, as we do every year for you all. It's a one-year contract. You really can't get multi-year agreements in reinsurance. So we did a, a stop-loss RFP. I'm going to show you the, the results and the recommendation of that. So here, we went to 16 different carriers. We had five responses in some form or fashion, really a few that were uncompetitive, and Berkshire Hathaway submitted a competitive quote against the incumbent vendor, Voya Financial. Here are the results of that, that RFP. You'll see that Voya, so right now, we have a very strong contract in place with Voya. We have what's called a no-new-laser renewal contract, which means they can't look at any one individual, whether that's an employee, or retiree, or a spouse, or a child. They can't look at any of those individuals and laser them out at a different deductible amount over and above the $375,000. So we've got a very strong contract. They do have the right to increase their, their premiums at renewal up to 50%. And they basically did that here. They came in at a 47 and a half percent increase from the current premiums on a calendar year basis. They do have concerns, I won't go into many details, but they do have concerns about a large claimant that we're dealing with right now. Berkshire Hathaway had an initial bid, and you'll see that in the next column over. Berkshire Hathaway submitted a bid through the purchasing requirements, and then we allow both Voya and Berkshire to firm up their quote after the bids are submitted. Typically, they want an additional month of claims. So Berkshire did, in that far right column, increase slightly over their initial proposal, but they're still, as you can see, 27%, 26% better than the Voya renewal. So, once again, it was, it paid off for us to do an RFP this year versus accept the Voya renewal. And then Berkshire Hathaway, as most of you may be aware, that's Warren Buffett organization, very financially strong company. So I wouldn't put anything in front of the council.
He, he also owns some Edgar, it's kind of funny.
Yeah.
He was on the list, too.
Yeah, he, yeah, so they are very strong in the insurance business as well as many other, many other things. So here's some highlights. Once again, we had 11 declines. We had five quotes. The recommendation to go to Berkshire Hathaway is a 20%, 20.74% calendar year increase, 15.5 on a fiscal year. And once again, I, this was all part of the budget process. I did plug in increases in reinsurance for you for, for budget purposes. So all of that is factored in, and it's very close to what I would have projected. All the contractual requirements are the same as what we have currently with Voya, so we're still going to get that no-new-laser contract with a 50% rate cap at renewal. With that being said, that's my recommendation to you for RFP 19-068.
Great, thank, thank you very much for your work, Lance.
Yes, sir.
You've done really good for us last several years. And is there any?
No, I don't have any questions. Lance, I think you did a really good job. I like the company that you picked. I would like the rest of the council to know that the fact that 11 companies didn't quote doesn't mean they didn't necessarily want the city, but now that Affordable Care has moved us all into this time crunch of three months, we see every day a lot of companies that just don't have the time to quote.
Absolutely.
I think that's the reason for the number of non-quotes and not necess- I think that's the reason for the number of non-quotes, and not necessarily reflective of the city's claims this year, because we did have a good claims year, so.
Yeah, and that, Councilman, that's a great point. I did, I didn't highlight it specifically, but on the, on the, our claims are running so well, which I once again presented for budget purposes, our liability actually went down again with Berkshire Hathaway this year. We got a big reduction in our overall claim liability last year with Voya. That's going down again. So that's continuing to be reflective of our claims overall, have continued to trend very positively. Thank you.
Great job. If you all don't have any questions, I move to approve. Go ahead.
Well, the only question I have, what does this mean to the average employee?
It just means, you know, we're managing the plan appropriately, so we're putting $130,000. If we would have just accepted the renewal with Voya, it's a $130,000 increase in premium, because we wouldn't have had anything to really negotiate. So just continuing to manage the plan effectively, both at the city, you know, the administration level. So $130,000 that goes back into the overall budget that we're not going to be coming to employees down the road and saying, "Hey, we need premium increases, we need plan design changes," any amount.
And done to the employee. It doesn't mean anything unless they have a claim over $375,000. This is just for those people who have really large claims that we get reimbursed for, so.
Yeah, they're only, the employees aren't only on the hook for their amounts, their out-of-pocket amounts, and we did reduce those out-of-pockets for January 1. Just had open enrollment meetings last week, so we've been communicating that to the employees.
Right. Great. I just wanted that to be communicated openly.
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion by Sellers is our second, a second by McGee. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And Lance, we're going to pull M2.
Yes, sir.
And send that back to the Insurance Benefit Committee.
Yes, sir.
For review at a different time.
Yes, yes, sir.
So good, you get to come back.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
M3?
Today, we're presenting an item for you all to consider with regard to the Rose Complex Master Plan. So just to recap briefly, in 2016, the City of Tyler set forth a master plan process for the Rose Complex. And then fast forward to July 2017, the council then approved that master plan. If you recall, we had a very large steering committee. It was led by former Mayor Kevin Altheis, and the plan included quite a bit of significant public involvement. So we took that plan and went out to the public for over a period of a year. So what we're looking at today is really implementing Phase One of that master plan by considering an architectural services consulting agreement. So just looking at Phase One, it's the construction of a new conference center. So Harvey Convention Center would still be in service, but we would reconstruct a new facility behind Harvey Hall. We would also do internal street improvements, improving the ingress and egress to the site, parking lot improvements and additions, and then looking at many side enhancements, including park construction, which is almost a two-acre park that was part of the original plan. And then finally, restoring the historic Mayfair so that it could be used as part of the rental space for the overall convention center project. What we're asking today is for you all to consider the consulting services agreement. So this really includes a first step in the Phase One process, because we look at architectural design as part of this process, preparation of construction plans, and assistance with the competitive bidding process. And then finally, construction management. As we go through this process, there are a number of different stakeholders and partners that utilize this property, and so working with all of those through the process. And then finally, I added the proposed timeline, so that, again, it's just a proposed timeline, but really looking at when construction could possibly begin. It would be closer to the end of 2020. And again, that's just a proposed timeline. So finally, what we're asking today is that the council authorize the City Manager to enter into the consulting services agreement with Fitzpatrick Architects and ratify some previous expenditures related to Phase One. And that was really just us looking at the preliminary budget and what the funds were for us to move forward with this project. So that was us working with Fitzpatrick prior to this process to understand what had to be budgeted and what funds were needed upfront. Brandy and Steve are here with Fitzpatrick, if you have any technical questions, but that's really all of our presentation.
Great, thank you very much. And this is something that we have worked on collectively as not only the last three mayors, but many, many city council members that have been involved in, with each one of those mayors. City staff has worked on this. There are so many staff members in the Parks Department and our Convention Bureau that have worked on this project for 20 to 25 years, that I know of. And so it's something that, when we asked Senator Altheis to run and to be the Chair of the Rose Complex Master Plan several years ago, we were very excited to have his input. And then Mayor Bass and Mayor Seber have also joined with us on this endeavor. You know, it really, we have gone through so many different iterations on where is the best place in the community to put a conference or convention hotel. But what we have all found, all mayors, is, and councils, is that the term "public-private" partnership is just not attainable in this community at this time. There will be a point that there will be a true public-private partnership, and that's why we're also retaining the land we have near where the new VA clinic is going. We have some land there that in the future, that will be something that we'll have a true public-private partnership. But we really don't, just the conservative nature of how we operate city government, it's really hard for us to have a public-public partnership with a private company. In other words, public-public is we would be funding the entire project. So here is a location that is the cornerstone of what our community is known for, and that is the Rose, the Rose. We have the largest municipal rose garden in the United States. Visitors come to Tyler, that is where they go. This area needs to be enhanced, and it can be utilized as our convention area. And this will take our total square footage, if you include the remodel of the Mayfair, a new convention project, and the Rose Garden Center, all combined, I mean, we're looking at about 80,000 square feet. Plus, the park in front and the food truck park will actually provide outside venue to make it even a larger project that we can compete, finally, for all the regional conventions that we have not been able to compete with. We've tried different angles, but I think that the best thing about the type of city government that we've all created in this community is that we can find the right path and we can move forward on it. And the nice thing about this is we also, when Barbara Bass was mayor and Kevin was in the state senate, we passed a 2% increase to the hotel occupancy tax. That 2% is the bulk of the money that will be going into this project. In fact, it's over 50% of the project. And the nice thing about that is this project is going to be paid for in cash as we move forward. And I do want to make one other caveat. I know the time schedule you just put up is an aggressive time schedule. We have to make sure that we're working with all the stakeholders that are in that area to make sure that we are timing it appropriately for them. And the CVB, Sherry Rickman, will also tell you that we have Harvey Hall leased out for three years. The next three years, there's projects. So we have to make sure we're timing that to live with the contracts that we've made with outside firms that are coming to Tyler. So the construction will be a very hard timing. And so I don't want to set the expectations to the community or to ourselves that we're going to get it done in 2021, because we're not, because we have to work with everybody else that are partners out there. So if anyone else has any comments or questions, please.
My only other comment would be with Steve and Brandy and Fitzpatrick, I mean, you guys do such a good job, and I think the team with the city and you guys and Harvey Hall, I mean, we've talked about it for a long time, and you have dreams and you have visions, but nothing matters until you see it getting built. So I actually see something happening. I mean, this is just not a master plan that's going in the closet. I mean, this is becoming real. And I'm proud of it. So all that to be said, I move to approve M3.
Second.
I have a motion by Warren and a second by Westbrook. Any other questions or comments?
Only one other comment I'd like to make, Mayor. One of you mayors, at the press release that we held for this particular unveiling, one of you said that it, and it was very well-stated, that this is truly a project for all of Tyler. It's not a North Tyler project, not a West Tyler project, not a downtown Tyler project. It's for all the citizens of Tyler, Texas. And that was well said. So that's the only thing I wanted to add.
Okay, great. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And now we'll move to, Lisa has M4, M6, M4, M5, M6, M7, and M8. So you'll be here with us a while.
M4 is for the 2019 Seal Coat Program. This contract was awarded in March of this year to Reynolds and Kay. During the course of this project, there were some street repair required that was more than we had originally estimated. So now that the work is fully complete, there has been an increase in the cost of the contract by $10,269.84. So therefore, we're requesting that City Council consider authorizing a reconciliation change order in that amount, $10,269.84, and also to approve the release of retainage to Reynolds and Kay in the amount of $28,813.61.
Any questions for Lisa?
I just have a comment. The Seal Coat Program this year worked really well, but I wanted the other council members to know how important it is that we fix the underneath before we do the Seal Coat, because we did Holly Tree Drive, and I counted the times it's been dug up since it was seal-coated, and it's 17 times we dug on that road since we seal-coated it. And it all had to do with water leaks that nobody could have avoided, but in the future, I'd like to see that not happen.
Well, and I'd just like to say that I'm so proud that next year, your budget's going to be double on this project, because of the steps we took, and we can affect more change in the community and maintain our streets better. So thank you very much for your efforts in that as well.
Thank you.
So with that said, may I have a motion to approve?
May.
A motion by McGee, a second by McKeller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. M5?
If you'll recall, in 2017, we awarded an engineering contract to Adams Engineering for the Martin Luther King Boulevard Improvements Project. The intent of this project is to install sidewalk and decorative lighting on MLK from West Gentry to North Broadway. Later on, we'll address a separate issue for the actual construction contract, but this issue is related to that project in that Encore needs to purchase and install the decorative light poles that will be installed as part of that overall project. Encore will be installing 33 historical light poles, as well as all of the wiring that's required to obviously operate those lights. So this is an agreement with Encore Electric in the amount of $68,577.59, and we're requesting authorization to enter into that agreement.
That's great. I'm excited this project is moving forward. It's been something that's been on our list for quite some time, and I'm really excited about it. So thank you for your efforts, Lisa. Do I have a motion to approve M5?
I have a motion, and I'm so pleased as well.
A motion by McKeller, second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. M6?
This item is related to the Bryn Mawr Edition Drainage Improvements Project. That's also a project that's been under design for quite a long time. The design is obviously now complete. The city has acquired all of the easements that we needed. So the project was advertised for bids. Bids were opened on October 8. We received several bids, but Reynolds and Kay was the low bidder at $427,266, and we are requesting authorization to enter into a construction contract.
And I do have one card. Do we have questions of Lisa, or we'd like to have the, Mr. Philippe Chaco?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
That is right.
Oh, good. Please come up, state your name and address for the record, please, and... You have five minutes, or if you need more, Ned, you can have that, too.
I need only three minutes.
Okay, good. Okay. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Philippe Chaco. I'm a true Texan without a Texas accent. I lived in Texas for over 47 years, and I received my two graduate degrees from Texas Christian University. That does make me a Texan. I found no other state better than Texas, and no other city greater than Tyler. So my wife and I made our home on Plantation Drive, and we are living there for the last 22-plus years. During the spring of 2005, my yard was selected by the Garden Club of Tyler for annual spring tour. Soon after that, the Bryn Mawr addition was developed with poor engineering. In spite of my request to make needed change to prevent flooding onto my yard and the new home set to be built, the city engineer at that time did not pay any attention and went on with the project. The result was that for the last 14 years, I suffered frequent flooding and several new homes on Bryn Mawr addition flooded. When I heard about the new Bryn Mawr Drainage Project, I contacted city engineer Lisa Crossman. She found a time in her busy schedule to visit my premises, and copied me the proposed project being prepared by Brennan Corporation. I requested to make a few changes to prevent future flooding onto my yard. They listened. So I am here today to thank city engineer Lisa Crossman, Brian Johnson, and Ray Woodrose of the Brennan Corporation for listening to my concern and making needed changes in the design for construction. Thank you all for making Tyler a livable and a shining city in East Texas.
Well, thank you very much, sir. I appreciate you coming today and providing your comments. We're proud of Lisa as well, and also the Brennan Corporation has always done a great job in this community, so thank you for voicing that.
And Lisa, I thank you for bringing this to fruition. It's been on the sales tax list for a long time, and these neighbors are going to be so happy that we've now funded it and getting it going. So thank you, and I move to approve M6.
I was going to say, we hadn't funded it yet until you make a motion.
I make a motion. M6 will fund it, so.
Right. A motion by Sellers, a second by Westbrook. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next item is a request for authorization to enter into
The next item is a request for authorization to enter into a construction contract with CFG Industries LLC for the repainting of the interior of the Troup Highway standpipe. If you'll recall, the exterior was repainted on this standpipe back in 2014. At the time, budget didn't allow to do the interior as well. We do have the budget now, and there are some issues that do need to be addressed. The design was completed, the project was put out for bid. Bids were opened on the 22nd. We did receive six bids. However, the low bid was a company by the name of MK Painting. Their bid had some errors, and the contractor requested that we actually withdraw their bid from consideration. So then we began looking at the second low bidder, which was a company by the name of Utility Service Company, Inc., and their bid was deemed irregular. The bid included a base bid for the majority of the work as well as an alternate bid so that we'll be able to replace the roof of the tank if it's deemed necessary once we actually start construction. They did not provide a bid for that work, and so therefore, their bid was deemed irregular. And now we have gone to the third low bidder, which again is CFG Industries LLC. The engineer, KSA, has reviewed that bid. They've called references, checked everything out. They've got a really good reputation. So we are recommending that we award this contract to CFG Industries LLC in the amount of $936,507.50.
Move to approve, number seven.
A motion by Westbrook.
Aye.
A second by McGee. Any other questions? Any questions?
So just curious, what was the difference from the low bid to bid that this being voted on?
Okay. We are asking to award the base and the alternate, so we'll be looking at the total bids. The low bid from MK Painting, Inc. was $533,700. The bid that we're asking to be awarded is $936,507.50. So...
Yeah, I would say that this happens to be a very technical process. I've been through this one other time with another tower that we had painted. I can't even remember what year on council I was. And just the level of detail and the price always surprised me, but I mean, this is a very technical process. So I mean, can't just go in there and slap some paint in the water source. So I mean, I understand that this is a very detailed process. So it's a huge number, but I mean, we got to do it.
Yep.
So anyway, so I have a motion by Westbrook, is that correct? A second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Now, back to MLK.
If I could, I'd get a paintbrush and I'd go through it, but...
Okay. The next item is a request to authorize the construction contract for the MLK Improvements Project. Again, this project is going to add sidewalks, ADA-compliant ramps, and decorative lighting to MLK Boulevard between Gentry and Broadway. In addition, we did actually discover some issues with a storm drain pipe on the far west side of the project near Parkdale, so we included that as part of this project so that we can take care of all of it at one time. So that repair to the storm drain pipe and head walls is also included. Again, we took bids on October 8th. We've received four bids, and the low bidder is South Texas Illumination LLC. So we're requesting the award of the construction contract to South Texas Illumination in the amount of $1,528,495.64.
And I just wanted to verify something on the design. It's something that, dating back to Ralph Caraway and Ed Moore, right? But it was going to have a feel at first that it was going to be more of like a commercial artery, right? But now that's been, there's so many houses that front on MLK, so the sidewalks and the ramps and all that stuff is going to have a residential feel to it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. That's, I just wanted to make sure that we were, that's where we were proven. I'm pretty sure that that's where we have gone with the project and everyone understood that. I just wanted to ask you directly.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Any other questions of Lisa on this project?
So move.
A motion to approve by McKeller of M8. A second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Lisa. That's a great project. Oh, you're doing R1, too? As well, I mean...
Yes, I am. Okay. R1 is a request to adopt a resolution committing the city to participate in an equivalent match program and to authorize the mayor to execute an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the Shiloh Road channel reconstruction project. So TechDOT participates in what's known as the Federal All-System Bridge Program, where TechDOT comes and inspects and repairs bridges that are on city streets. So they're actually doing this work for us, but in order for them to do this work for us, the city does have to participate in some way. That participation can either be a monetary participation where we pay 10% of the cost of the project, or those costs can be waived if the city agrees to do what's called an equivalent match project, where the city comes in and does repairs on some other structure within the city, as long as the cost of those repairs is equivalent to that amount of money we would have paid otherwise to TechDOT for the project. So the project that TechDOT has identified is some repairs on the Whittle Street Bridge. The project that the city has proposed to TechDOT as the equivalent match project is the repair of the channel underneath Shiloh Road just east of Donningbrook. So if you'll recall, this is a project that was added to the HACENT program as of this fiscal year. The channel walls are separating from the channel bottom, which is a structural issue. So TechDOT did approve this repair as an equivalent match project so that they can do the Whittle Street Bridge repair.
Sounds great to me. Any questions? Can I have a motion?
I move to approve R1.
Second.
Motion by Warren, a second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Lisa.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor and Council. It's good to be with you and see you again. The resolution you have before you is a professional service contract to KSA to begin Group Two engineering and design and construction management work for the wastewater collection system, looking at the hydraulic capacity assessments, condition assessments, lift station assessments, and force main assessments. The resolution agrees with the consent decree outline, which requires the city of Tyler to address the seven mandatory compliance requirements, which start on page 16 and end on page 53. As we enter Group Two, there has been an extensive planning and organizing for a few months with local engineering firms and local contractors. One of Tyler Water Utilities' goals was to focus on organizing Group Two work from maximum efficiency while working smarter and starting construction in a more sensible way, which simply means Tyler Water Utilities is partnering with the local firms and local contractors to minimize multiple construction contracts. In order to do this, an extensive planning and organizing efforts have been underway for months. Mr. Newhouse, our compliance engineer, will present the resolution and also resolution number three. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This first item, R2, has to do with the first of these engineering services contracts that are being proposed with KSA engineers. The planned work as part of this engineering services contract deals with Group Two, and Group Two is work that was done in Basins 8 and 15 and 13. And just, you know, real quick, Group One focused on manholes on lines 10 inches and larger across the entire city. So now we're coming back, and the gravity mains in Basins 8 and 15, the lines in Basins 8 and 15. So now we're coming back and looking specifically at manholes in 8 and 15 that are on lines less than 10 inches, so not to confuse the manhole work that was done. So the work that they are going to be overseeing, or we're proposing that they oversee, included 663 manholes that were inspected by pipeline analysis. The results of that indicated that there are 381 of those that we need to monitor. So we just need to watch them. We don't have any necessarily dollars that we have to spend to comply with the consent decree. 250 of those, however, we do need to remediate. So 250 of those manholes with an estimated construction cost at this point, and this is from pipeline analysis, of just under $600,000. The other half of this work were, again, the main lines or the gravity lines in Basin 13, and there were 1,878 line segments inspected, almost 500,496,004 lineal feet. We've got to monitor about 321,645 lineal feet of that, but we need to remediate 174,359. So we've got quite a bit more gravity main work to do in this group than we did in the first group. So we've got an estimated construction cost right now of just under $6.1 million. And again, this is pipeline analysis, initial estimate.
Right, and the good thing is the bids that we've been receiving have been 25% to 40% less than...
They have been running...
The estimated amount.
They have been running.
So you'll keep up that, you'll keep that up. So do you have a photograph of Basin 13? Ah, thank you.
So Basin 13 is the green basin there. It is a very large basin. It's one of the largest basins that we've got in terms of looking at footage of line. A lot of these lines are older lines, so a lot of these lines need a little TLC, or maybe a lot of TLC in some cases. 8 and 15 is again where we're going to be doing the manhole work on the smaller diameter lines.
Right, right.
So this is the work that we're wanting the KSA to supervise. Just as a quick aside, as we get into the number here, this number that we are, that is being proposed, as a percentage of the estimated construction cost, is about 4% lower than it was at this time for Group One. So this efficiency that we're hoping to gain, at this point, looks like we're there. Now, some of the construction costs from the initial estimates, the first time around, those numbers have changed a little bit, but looking at an applesauce comparison, we're starting off on the right foot. So with that framed in that way, we would like you guys to authorize that the city manager execute an engineering services contract in an amount not to exceed $1,232,000 with KSA engineers for work in the wastewater collection system with Group Two, and then approve the resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Any questions, or I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve R2.
Motion from Sellers.
Second.
Second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
R3?
R3 is a second engineering services contract that we would like you to consider, again with KSA engineers. This work, it has to do with some, with one package. It's really supervising our, what we call our indefinite quantity, indefinite delivery contractor. So remember, we pulled one piece of Group One, and that was our repair and replace manhole package, and we want to manage that as part of this group. So that's some of the work that they are being asked to supervise. We are continuing our right-of-way work. We're asking them to verify what's been cleared. And again, we've talked about, as you're doing this work, we've got access issues, and we need to design some improvements to alleviate some of these access issues for future work, for future inspections, so that we continue our capability and our ability to monitor and watch our system. Your favorite word of proactive, Mayor, the creek crossing maintenance work. We are asking them to continue to evaluate and assist us in designing the best way to proactively prevent any type of creek crossing issues.
Good.
And then there's a training, a planning portion of that, too, in which they're going to be looking at all of our creek crossings, and they're going to be helping train the city staff to continue doing this. So the plan is that KSA looks at a third of them, KSA with city staff looks at the second third, and in the last third, the city staff with their legs under them can continue to look at and prioritize and put together. So all that is part of what we're proposing here with this engineering services contract.
Are you in charge of the heat in here?
Oh.
Good, thank you. Well, very good. No, I'm, yeah, I'm very excited about that part of the project. Is that, that'll alleviate much of our ongoing issues with EPA.
That is...
And the biggest danger zones for us is the community.
Move to approve R3.
A motion by Warren.
Second.
Second by McKeller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Ed, I'm going to give a shout-out real quick while she's getting ready. I was just thinking about this. Evansville beat Kentucky last night. That's my dad's hometown. They beat the number-one team in the country in basketball, isn't it? Little Evansville, the college there. So that's pretty cool. Good basketball. Oh, I'm sorry.
Final one. There are currently plans to redevelop the Rose Plaza Shopping Center. This is the shopping center that's located just north of the Loop and Shelley Drive. The storefront on the far north of that shopping center is where the Hastings Music Store used to be. It's been empty for quite some time now, and so there are plans to redevelop that storefront into a new facility. As part of the plans for that shopping center, the developer developed a traffic impact analysis, which was reviewed by TechDOT as well as by city staff. The analysis recommended that a new signalized intersection be installed on South Broadway to handle the traffic that's anticipated to be going in and out of the shopping center. So in addition to that signalized intersection, there are also plans for some minor changes to the remaining two driveways into that shopping center as well as to Shelley Drive. Because these improvements are affecting the street, the developer has come to the city with a request for some participation in the cost of these improvements. So this item is actually looking at two different agreements. There is an agreement with TechDOT, because again, this section of Broadway is TechDOT right-of-way. So there is an agreement between the city and TechDOT that we're asking for authorization, which is a local on-system improvement project agreement. So that agreement with TechDOT is what will allow the city through the developer to actually make these improvements within TechDOT right-of-way.
make these improvements within TechDOT right-of-way. Then there is a second agreement separate from that, which is between the city and the developer, and that is the agreement that will spell out the responsibilities and the cost participation between the developer and the city so that this project can proceed. So we're asking for.
Any questions of Lisa on this?
I don't have a question, but I do like to see movement north of the Loop and south of Amherst. That's, that's exciting.
So is that a motion?
It's not mine. You and.
Oh. I move to approve.
Motion by Sellers, a second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now we're on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by, second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And so now we're on to the city manager's report.
So just a couple of items, Mayor and Council, so to kind of update the council on. On the quiet zone update, the city and Union Pacific Railroad received notification from the federal railroad administration on last Tuesday that the city's quiet zone was back in compliance. However, staff received notification from Union Pacific Railroad afterwards that they have an issue with the sidewalk that was placed on Palace Avenue in front of the car lot and will not consider the car zone, or quiet zone in compliance until the sidewalk is addressed. Staff does not know yet exactly what does that mean, but we are working with Union Pacific to address this issue and waiting further confirmation from them by email on what is the exact things that we need to do on that sidewalk portion to have the quiet zone put back in place. For many of the different projects that were discussed today, the public works and communications departments work together to put a video report out each month. We've just released the one for October showing the different progress throughout the city on different public works projects, and so it will be under the Tyler Public Works Roundup on YouTube that you can catch quite a few of the different projects, some of which y'all took action on today, to be able to kind of send out there and to communicate with your constituents. And finally, I have a story that I'd like to share to council that came to us from the library that kind of shows as far as that call to serve spirit that you saw with the staff today and is part of our culture. Heather Oswald, who's an employee with the Tyler Public Library, provided a great customer service with an expression of empathy while waiting on a patron who was applying for a library card. Patron stated she had just gotten out of jail and couldn't wait to come to the library and check out books, to which Heather responded, "Welcome home." Imagine how much that must have meant to someone to have gotten out of jail. How often do you think they hear that? This kind of response was not a loss on the patron, as patron beamed and went on about how they loved the library and had wanted to check out books for such a long time and was excited to check out again. The smallest of kindnesses can have the biggest effect on people's lives. Thank you, Heather, for your great customer service skills and your kind nature. With that, Mayor.
Very nice.
Turn it back over to you, sir.
And we're, we're going to recess for executive session, but there's a few folks out there that I'm going to, y'all don't leave because I'd like to come down before the executive session. I think some of y'all might be here for items that were maybe on the consent agenda, so if you have any questions for me, I want to come down before you leave, before I recess, okay? Because I can kind of see it in your faces that you're wondering exactly what just happened. So I want to make sure I come out and speak to you, okay? So y'all don't leave yet, but, so we're, we're going to go into executive session. We have two items. Executive item number one, under Texas Government Code Section 551.072, real estate deliberation regarding the following. Discuss the purchase, exchange, sell, lease, or value of real property, the public discussion of which would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the city. Executive session number, item number two, under Texas Government Code Section 551.074, personnel matters deliberation regarding the following. The employment, the duties, and evaluation of the city manager. And I, I want to make very clear to the public that this is an annual review that we, a process that we go through on the city manager. There is not anything other than just the normal review, and it will be a two to three meeting process, but it's something that we will go through some evaluation forms and whatnot. But I just want to make sure that the public is informed that this is just a routine matter. So at this moment, we will adjourn and we will come back, but I'm going to come down before. So we're going to adjourn. At this time, we're coming back from our executive session items. We do have action to take on one of the items today. The city has contracted with a broker, Range Realty, to sell three certain tracts of real property that the municipality owns. This real property has been listed for over thirty days with a multiple listing service, which has produced a willing and able buyer. Is there a motion to authorize the sale of this property?
Request that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract of sale with TD Land Management to three certain tracts of land located on West Irwin Street for the purchase price of $3.25 per square foot or $411,968.70.
That is a motion by McGee.
Second.
A second by McKeller. Is that a motion by Warren?
Yes.
Motion by Warren and a second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, we are adjourned.